Can you hear me now? Sorry y'all, I was on mute, I'm sorry. Hey, hey, hey. Can you hear me now? Let me know. Okay, okay, great. Yeah, so tonight, family, I'm gonna wait for some of you guys to come in and then I also pinned the stream yard because I have Ms. Tia. I'm seeing if she's gonna come in so I can help her with a few things. Okay, good, good. So, family, tonight we are discussing inner child, right? And so, first thing first, we're gonna start out today on utilizing our, we're gonna tap into our root chakra, I'm using the root chakra bowl. So hence, I got on a lot of red today. I don't know, I was, I was just moved to wear a lot of red today. I don't know why, you know. I think because the energy that I have been on, family, is fiery energy, right? Getting things done, doing, you know, being creative, working, right? In all different aspects of things, not only just my current job, but also in my spiritual, you know, work. And studying and doing all kinds of things, right? So first, I want to start out by raising our vibration. So I am with our root chakra. Y'all know I like to play my singing bowls when I first come on to raise our vibration, give us some energy. And then we're gonna get into talking about the inner child tonight because I wanna discuss that and I'm gonna tell you why. Especially for those who will be coming to the class on Saturday, it's gonna go right into that, okay? So, let's go ahead and tap into this root chakra energy first, alright? Here we go. Take a deep breath, family. I hope y'all could hear that because sometimes it's like real low and sometimes you can hear it loud, sometimes you can't hear it, you know? But I hope y'all can hear that. So, let's get into this message that we're gonna talk about tonight, family. The first thing I do wanna discuss is our shadow work class, right? So we do have, you heard it louder clear, good, good sis, thank you. So, I wanted to discuss the class. So the shadow work class that we have, I normally have, you know, a lot of my Patreon family here in reference of shadow work sessions. But I wanted to let you guys know that I'm doing a class that's outside of these sessions, right? That class is centered around things that we have not discussed here, okay? It's bringing numerology into shadow work, but in a different aspect of looking at specific numbers around your date of birth as well as your full name, okay? So, you know, we're gonna talk a lot about that. We're gonna talk about, you know, different ways to embrace the shadow and giving you tools and prompts and all kinds of stuff that's gonna be in that class, okay? So, I hope to see you guys there, okay? And if you can't make the class, I am thinking about, and I'm not even sure yet, hey, Ms. T, hey, 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 okay. That's okay because I know you multitasking and doing some things, that's fine. And we could do, we could, you know, I can help you with your your stream yard now, or we can, or we can do it afterwards, okay? So it is up to you, okay? I'm so happy you're doing this class. No problem, no problem, Ms. T. So yeah, and so we're definitely doing this in reference of different ways to look at things. I'm still doing my shadow work and I hope that all of you guys are still doing your shadow work, right? Because shadow work is a continuous thing, right? And so, hence why I played the root chakra bowl at the beginning of this session because it starts with that root chakra, right? And we work our way up in reference of working on those chakras as well as the same thing in reference of the aspects of the soul, right? So, tonight, I know I always talk about shadow work and that's also what I'm gonna talk about. But we're gonna talk about some of the aspects of our soul, right? And some of those things that go along with the aspects of the soul and how we can tap into that as well. That is also a part of our shadow as well, okay? So, the thing that I wanted to talk about today is inner child. Now, I have already posted on my page, which is for free, a whole video about the inner child, right? But tonight, we're gonna talk back about the inner child because as a collective, one of the messages that came out when I used my shadow work deck for pulling cards for you guys was about us tapping in with our inner child, like abuse and abandonment and things of that sort. So I definitely want us to talk about that tonight. And I posted in the chat, the link for you guys to come up if you wanna talk about your experiences and so forth or whatever. You don't have to though, you guys know that. But I have stream yard just for that, for us, okay? Because this is a sacred space. No one is here that is going to judge. No one is here that is not gonna give you love, okay? Not here on my channel, anyway, okay? So, family, we have a lot to discuss around the inner child. So, if you're in my shadow work class this Saturday, we're gonna deep dive on some different things that I'm gonna talk about too, right? About the aspect of the soul. Now, when I'm talking about the aspect of the soul, I haven't really brought that to you guys yet because that was, that's something that'll be brought out in my class. One of those five things that I have identified in reference of the aspect of the soul is the inner child, okay? And so, that inner child, family, is what we all need to work on. What is our inner child? That inner child is, starts with us being a baby, right? An emerald, right, is what they say, right? A young child, an infant, all the way to a toddler, a middle school. All of that is considered your, you being an inner child, in your inner child phase, okay? With that being said, it is definitely about the fears and your traumas and and the neglect and even lost childhood situations that you may have went through during that time, okay? Your inner child is basically, it could be like I'm pinpointing during that child, during that event or that time, you pinpointing out some things that you may have suffered that may have not been that great, right? Or it may have been good, you know what I mean? Because shadow work is not always bad, right? We do have to look at that negative part of ourself first and I tell you guys to grasp that first, right? So when you grasp that, then you can kinda move into, okay, well, this is what I really appreciated about that time. And these were the lessons that I learned, turn that negative into the positive. Remember, I always tell you guys that, right? And so, the inner child is that portion that a lot of us have, it's where it started from, right? That's why we've had these, you know, shadow events in our life, some of us, you know? That's why some of us have suppressed that as well. But it's about us working on that, right? And with us being able to work on that, that's another part of us doing our shadow work, family. You see how it's multiple layers to this? It's not just one layer. Yes, you can do multiple different ways, you can use different tools in reference of your shadow. But it's actually specific aspects of the soul that you really should be tapping on. And the reason why I break it out like this, because it's a little easier, right? Instead of some people have a hard time tackling one thing, you know, tackling all of it at one time. It's okay to break out that shadow self, right? It's okay to just look at the childhood situations first, then move into your adulthood. Because who's to say you haven't suffered trauma throughout your whole life, right? And so, looking at the inner child is kinda like the first step. Like we talking, like I've played the root chakra bowl at the beginning of this. That's how, that's why I'm trying to bring this inner child to you guys now, so you can start from the beginning. Because majority of us, it's that's where it started, family, okay? Now, I always use myself as an example because I am a Gemini sun, so I am to confess, to give you guys everything that has happened to me as an example. And the example for me has always been, and I probably have told you guys here that's been on shadow work sessions with me for a while, you probably already know, the abandonment, right? So being abandoned, feeling abandoned as a child. Sometimes, some people can look at that and say, well, you still have family, yes. But sometimes abandonment, family, is based off of how you take that, how you perceive it, right? And as a child, some things are very fond to children that you don't even feel, or you may not even think is prominent to them, right? Like, especially not having your father around, okay? That's one that a lot of people can attest to, right? In reference of feeling abandoned, right? Or maybe even not having your mother around, right? That's another form of feeling abandoned. Well, in those cases, my father and my mother was young when I was a child, right? So a lot of aspects of childhood memories are from my grandmother, right, who raised me. My mom, she did, but she had a lot of help, you know what I mean? And majority of the time, I was the part of my life that I can look at and remember was including my grandmother. That's why that's, she'll always be the head of me, right? And so, that's something I had to deep dive into because a lot of times, it was, I was missing that, that I wanted from my dad, which my dad didn't even live in the same state, you know what I mean? And then that piece I wanted from my mom, but she was with her husband and moved on and, you know, and I was just with my grandmother, you know? And so, those things become traumatizing. And sometimes they do it without being conscious that it's being traumatized. And so, that's why you have to still have grace and love for even for the parent or the person who may have caused some type of trauma to you as well. That's also a part of this, right? Being able to forgive them, because I forgive my parents, right? At one point in time, I didn't forgive my parents. I didn't feel like, I was like, well, they didn't raise me, they didn't care about, you know? But you have that chip on your shoulder as a young child anyway, right? And so, with age and wisdom, you know now how to forgive. You know now how to look at things in a bigger picture. You know now how to love from the heart, right? And that's some things you're gonna have to learn. Some people haven't even got there even in old age, right? But that's a part of their shadow that they have to tap into because you gotta face yourself and understand that. And that's what I always tell people, they're human, just like you going through this human experience, right? And so, what was the best part of that negative of feeling abandoned as a child is I've gained out of all the shadow work that I've done, and I'm just using myself as an example, is that I was given my grandmother to raise me. You know how much positive things came out of that? Her and my granddad, right? So I had two elders to raise me. What better than, you know, than the most parents, right? Some, some don't even get that. Some people don't even get that. They get abandoned and they don't have no family, you know? So I had to look at it as a positive. And those that I was raised with have wisdom. Yes, you know, my granddad, he was a bishop, so that was the religion that he brought, right? But my grandmother wasn't in the church. She was just, you know, a regular grandma, okay? That loved all her granddaughter, you know? And so, I still felt that love in a segment of my life. And I have to give that to her in reference of not sealing that peace but still having a piece of me that was missing. Do you understand? So, doing shadow work, we have to think about all of these things. We have to look back at all of these things. We have to reassess all of these things as a young child, right? What affect you? How was you affected? You heard me talk about the abandonment issues, right? But some of you may have had abusive issues, molestation issues. You know, all kinds of things, right? That could have happened. Homelessness, homelessness, you know? It's all kinds of things people deal with from the childhood all the way up to adulthood. And so, we have to start with the inner child, family. We have to start, okay, sis, coming on up. Add you to the stage, yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Yeah, I'm glad you joined me. Yeah.
I wanna let you finish saying what you gotta say, then I wanna say something about mine.
Yeah, and so I was just saying, you know, I'm just saying, you know, in reference of, you know, just about the abandonment and how we have to deal with that, right? Because a lot of times if we suppress that, it will manifest in your life in a different way that will cause issues down the line. And a lot of times, we don't think about that, right? We don't think about that child, you know? And in your mind, there is a way to not only just sit and think about the things that happen, but put yourself, when you meditate, put yourself back into that little child's body and really, really think about what you needed at that time. And can you get through that segment of life now by doing it for that little child, right? That's another solution I wanted to talk to you guys about. But I'm gonna let sis tell hers in reference of what she may have went through because this is our sacred space. We coming here to talk about our inner child. Go ahead, sis.
Well, for me, mine was my father. He was, he wasn't around, but he was around, like, he'll come get me, but he'll leave me with my grandma or his sisters or whatever. And so, I didn't really never spend no time with him. And recently, he was like, because I call him by his first name, he's like, why you call me by my friend? I'm like, well, that's how I know you. And he wanted to know, he's like, you know, why? Why we don't have this type of relationship? And I'm like, well, this is the same relationship we've had all our life. But I used to be, first I was upset with my mom because he went down, then I realized, I'm like, well, my mommy never stopped him from coming. So, that was on him. And then when I realized that, then I was upset with him. Because, you know, I got other sisters and brothers from him and I know that he was spending time with them. And I was like, well, why he don't wanna spend time with me? And so, a lot of things, I realize now, like when I got older, that a lot of ways that like relationships that I may have with a man is based on me trying to have that way him. And so, when I did my shadow work, it made me realize a lot of things, like how I was in different relationships because I was actually looking for my daddy in these other people instead of somebody just for me, you know, like somebody you're in a relationship with. But when I did my shadow work, hey Chrissy, when I did my shadow work, it was a lot of stuff that I, you know, like I said, I realized. And I don't have no problem with him, I can talk to him now, but we still don't have no close relationship because we never had it. And I'm like, it's like, you've been, I'm like, it's forty seven years that we haven't been doing this to kinda go back and be like close.
Yeah.
No, I don't know him, you know?
And that's okay too, you know, because the thing of it is, you do shadow work, like I always tell you guys, for you. So, just because you don't have a relationship with him now, still, that's okay because you're able to accept, right? And you acknowledged, and like you said, you've done your shadow work and you've realized the issue that was causing you to do some things that weren't, you know, right in your adulthood from that situation. So, now you could put a, give a pat on your back for the shadow work that you've done for you because you can move on and still be able to hold a conversation with him, be cordial. You may not have a relationship, just like, that's the same way with, you know, with, you know, with my family. I have a relationship with my father more than I have even with my mom now. Because over the years, things have happened, but I'm cordial with both, you know? And as you said to that point about how you did the shadow work, sis, that was very profound. I love that when you said, that's what you was looking for in another relationship. And that also too is why I had some relationships that weren't the best either in my past because the abandonment issues is what I wanted. I always felt like I had to have somebody there, you know what I mean? And because I always felt like I didn't have anyone there, you know, just me and my grandma, you know what I'm saying? And so, I had to grow out of that. I had to do the shadow work too. I had to realize. And now I'm able to be by myself. I'm able to, you know, not have to worry about having a man because, you know, I feel that, you know, I worry so much that I'm gonna be abandoned by a man and all this type of stuff. Those are things that you have, that come from childhood too, you know? But they also can come from you just being, you know, growing into adulthood as well, you know what I'm saying? So, you know, but this is about inner child and I feel like a lot of us definitely, and I like that you came up and talked about the father situation because a lot of us have those situations based off of our father not being in our life. And like, like you said, your dad came and picked you up and stuff like that. My dad, he had his dad to come and take care of me because he wasn't in the same state, you know what I'm saying? So, that really put a strain on the relationship and we had to learn each other. We had to, and now we're like the best of friends, you know? But it's after years of putting in work and really letting him know, that's another thing. You have to face that person sometimes too and let them know how they've hurt you, even from being that child, right? In conversation, sometimes you really have to face that person and you just have, and it's really, it's for you, you know what I'm saying? You having to go to that person and say, listen, you know, I was real, you know, I know you didn't realize it because maybe you, you know, maybe you was living your life, you know what I'm saying? Because that's how I told my dad. I said, I know you was living life, you know what I'm saying? You was young. Because my dad was like eighteen when they had me. My mom was like sixteen. They were like young, you know? So, how can you, for my situation, I was like, how can I blame you? Because I can't even imagine. And then, it also becomes, as we've been discussing, afflictions because I noticed I did the same thing, you see? I had, I mean, I didn't abandon my son, but I had my son at a young age too. You see what I'm saying? So, we have to kinda look at the same situation and that made me realize and I had to do that shadow work as well. And say, okay, well, I fought at my family, but my dad and my mom, but then I had my son at seventeen, you know? So, it's a lot of things that you have to deep dive on when you doing your shadow work. And you have to be honest with yourself. And hopefully that other person can be honest with you as well, you know, through a process too. How did your dad take that, you know, when you told him or did you talk to him about you doing shadow work? Or, you know, how did you guys mend that relationship or, you know, how did that go?
I never told him about no shadow work, but, you know, I told him, like, this is our relationship, this is what it always been. But now I don't have, I don't have a problem with him. I mean, I can talk to him, but since we had never had that closeness, it's like, to me, it still feel like I'm trying to get to know somebody I don't know. But, but I also understand that whatever he had going on, that don't have nothing to do with me. Didn't have anything to do with me. And he have like, just like me now, I might have my own thing going on and that don't have anything to do with my kids. So, I have to realize that they have their own personal issues that they were going through, he was going through at that time. So I can't really blame him, so to speak. So, it's like I understand. So now, I don't have no problem. I can talk to him. But I don't think, right now, if we were ever be like really, really close.
Yeah, and that's okay, you know? That's okay. Because the thing of it is, we also have to forgive ourself and forgive them. But we gotta show ourself grace as well and show them grace that, okay, yes, we may not have this relationship. Be like buddy buddy, you know what I'm saying? But it's okay, at least now, you know, I've accepted it. I've made peace with it and I can move forward, you know what I'm saying? As Chrissy was saying here, yes, it's their first time going through a human experience too. Yeah, it's everybody's going through a human experience here, right? And so, who are we to judge, you know? Even though I know, I mean, you know, it could be very bad and tough, you know? I'm not saying that this will be easy for someone who has been through some type of abuse or molestation, no, you know what I'm saying? But, because I understand that, you know, there is a lot of people who have went through those type of traumatic things too in reference of dealing with inner child trauma. And to that, I say, that is when I would say the thing that Chrissy was saying about write a letter, right? I love that she put that because that was one of the things that was in my solutions. But yes, I would say if you were abused, right? Because this is, you know, you very strong to be able to face that and build a relationship with someone who has abused you, right? But, I would say write a letter to that person and let them know how bad they have hurt you in that aspect of release, right? And you don't have to even give it to that person, you see? But, you know, you just have to write all of that down and it's a part of getting it out, you see what I'm saying? And being able to understand in your mind that you have to let that go, right? You have to let it go because that can fester. And that fester can make a lot of things in your life traumatized by it and even make you have ailments in your body. Remember I talked to you guys about that, what Ms. T said? I've been through it all, child, and I had to do so much healing for childhood trauma, yes, you know, yeah. Childhood trauma. Inner child trauma is one of the main things that people don't go back and do, you know? They won't go back and do it. They apparently won't even go back and do their shadow stuff, right, with their lower self. So they definitely won't do it in reference of their inner child. But that's the roots, you see? That's why I played the root chakra today. It's the root. Thank you, love, for coming up. And the main thing I wanted to also talk about with the inner child is some formats to it, right? So I did find some things that I do want to read to you guys about, right? And so, the inner child, right? The inner child was just, is just an innocent child, right? A lot of us, being that we A lot of us, being that we, you know, we, we, um, went through childhood trauma. It can make us so aggressive also towards our children and being able to protect them and care for them. But, and that's a good thing, right? Um, because you don't want that to continue, right? That, that, um, that cycle, right? That cycle of things. Cause some people let that cycle of thing continue, family. You see what I'm saying? Okay. And so what I wanted to also read from, to you guys on what I found in this article about inner child, right? It talks about, um, it talks about the inner child and it says, "The truth is that the inner child remains with us throughout our lifetime. It does." Though your own observation process, you, you can uncover the inner child in, in yourself and in others. The great deal of healing processes and the development of the integrated psyche requires inner child work. It does. He said, this is what Carl Jung said, "In every adult there lurks a child, an internal child. Something that is becoming is never completed. It calls for an unceasing care, attention and education. That is the part of the human personality which waits to be developed and become whole." So basically what I feel from when he said that is that, yeah, we, it starts with that inner child, with everything we do. And sometimes it gets pushed to the side because people don't even realize that that still has affected your behaviors, affected how you think. Think about how you've been raised, right? How you've been raised always stands as, as a path to your, to your adulthood, right? And so if that's not right from the beginning, it's just like a race. If somebody pushes you off the track, if you're in a race and you running and you got somebody beside you constantly nudging at you, pushing you, pushing you, pushing you, you gonna wind up falling off the track, family. Until somebody is able to come and help you to get back on track or you help yourself get back up, right? But there's something that's there in reference of trying to stay on track from childhood all the way up or even going back if you haven't been on that same, you know, path. Um, but I, but the way I look at that, that was like profound when I read that because it was like, okay, yeah, you know, and I, before I did any or started doing any childhood, I mean, any, um, shadow work, family, I never thought about doing inner child. Never even thought about the concept. Um, but it, but it says, "With practice, we can see that our wounded inner child is not only us. Our wounded inner child may represent several generations," right? So you have to remember, as we spoke about our experiences and Tanja's came up and she talked about her experience and I gave you guys mine, that for generations, people have been hurt in inner child situations themselves. So hurt people hurt people is a real statement, family, right? Our mothers have suffered, our fathers have suffered. What inner child situation did they go to, go through, right? And so we have to really think about that as well. Yes, we have to protect them. Ex- exactly. Yes, sis, we do. Or, or what you say? Or block like I can't remember most of my younger life. Right! That's another, that's another childhood trauma. And that's me too. I blocked a lot of my childhood out on purpose though. And it's, 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 um, I feel like it's on purpose, but it's unconscious. It's unconsciously doing it, like, um, I don't wanna remember, you know? It's kind of like that because it's traumatizing, right? Um, I need to, I need to really meditate and dig us. That's why I, yes, yes. I did that and it, and I kind of started remembering a lot about things that I did block out, right? Yeah, that's, that's, you know what that is? That's like the same as when we block out things from, you know, going through it right then. Like we may block out, you know, who dumped us or, you know, who ghosted us. Or, you know, maybe we had a divorce and we don't wanna think about that person no more. It's just like that. We try to block the trauma because we don't wanna deal with it, but we gotta go back and deal with it, you see? Yes, the blockage, that blockages, protection, yes, until you start healing from things little by little. Right. That's right, Miss T. That's right. And so that's why it's like those, but the, but that also is about those generational curses and afflictions as well that is, that happened before you were even born. So some of the inner child is generational, family. Like your mother may have suffered throughout her life. Your father may have suffered throughout his life. Your grandparents may have suffered, you know, parent, perhaps parents. Our parents weren't able to look after the wounded child in themselves. So if they weren't able to look at their inner child and really realize and do their own shadow work and they just been living life, taking pain and trauma after trauma and pain and hurt after the next and over and over and over, what do you think they're gonna instill into you? Or what do you think is gonna be projected to you? So when we, we're embracing the, the wounded inner child in us, we are embracing all of the inner child in our past generations. So that's why this is also important to work on your inner child, not just because you wanna, yes, we do wanna get past and we wanna heal for ourselves, but we also wanna take this and use it as a torch to say that we're, we're healing generations, you see? And so that's another part I want you guys to think about, um, in reference of doing, yes, because it will all pile up. It will all pile up, Chrissy. Yes, it will all pile up. Yes, it will all pile up. Mm-hmm. Yes, generational curses over and over and over and over. So we have to, um, yeah, we need to deal with it now. So for our kids and the grandkids, right? And we need to teach them because it's not taught to look at your inner child. That's why I talk to my son and say, well, how did you feel? Just ask your kids this too. How did you feel about your childhood? How did you look at your childhood? Was your childhood good to you? What, what did you feel could have been better? That's how you get it started, you see? That's how you pass on that, um, mindfulness of inner child healing and really thinking about your childhood and how it has treated you and how others treated you during that time. So not only just you, but you need to look at your children and start working with your children with this as well. Okay, but work on you first, then move to your children, right? And like I said, this, this is just some things, family. I like to give you guys solutions and stuff like that, right? This, this is a practice, right? This is you practicing your shadow work by trying the different aspects, to tap on these different aspects of the soul, okay? This practice is not a practice for ourselves alone, but, but for the numbers, the numerous people that we have in our generations, ancestors, all kinds of, you know, family members who have been through things that have never resolved any type of trauma. This is what that's for, you know? So I wanna give you guys some indicators to unresolved trauma with inner child, okay? So you guys can recognize this, okay? And when you recognize it in yourself and you're able to work on it for yourself and with your children, you maybe can help the next person. Each one teach one, right? Be open to helping others and let others know, you know, maybe you got some inner child trauma that you need to work on. Maybe there's something you need to, you know, work on. So first thing I have here, it says, um, any form of addiction. Now, that's overeating, that's alcoholism, sex, drugs, gambling, even workaholics, you know? Because if you think about that, maybe you have had that generations over generations and not even realizing it, family, right? From childhood, you know? It may have had you out in the farms picking cotton at a young age. I don't know, okay? All right. Um, you need to always be in control or lack of trust in life and people. Now, this was one of the ones I knew that I needed childhood trauma. I had, uh, inner childhood issues, okay? The need to always be in control and the lack of trust in life and people. Because I know that I had that, I had that, where I always have to be in control. I still fight with that, right? The, the fear of the unknown and the lack of control. Those are inner child trauma. Never enough syndrome, okay? That's another thing where you feel like you never have enough. That's another childhood, you know, inner child, uh, trauma you may have to work with, okay? Um, yes, I, yes, I have it too, sis. Yes, yes, right? Mm-hmm. Okay, the next one was the fears of abandonment. That was the one I shared with you guys. The fear of abandonment or abandonment issues, which I know I, I, I had those, but I've kind of conquered them, okay? Difficulty and confusion, knowing what you want or how you feel. Now, this goes back to you being, you know, um, shunned as a child to not feel a certain way or not to express yourself, right? So now you have difficulty and confusion of knowing what you want and how to feel. Because you've always been shunned of how to feel as a child, you know, instead of allowing you to, uh, express yourself. A lot of certain cultures will do this to their children where they feel that their children shouldn't be able to express themselves. But that causes inner child and then it's trauma and they don't even realize that they're bringing on inflictions and problems that child. Allow that child to express how they feel. Allow that child. Those are some of the things you probably are dealing with in adulthood and don't even realize. Okay? Here's another good one. Fear of trying something new. The fear of trying something new because your family has always done it this way. This is the way we're gonna do it. This is our culture. Ain't no other way to do it. This is the way or the highway. Those are bring inner child trauma. Because it's always three ways to skin a cat, excuse me, in reference of anybody with cats. But you know, it's a figure of speech. We ain't skinning any cats or anything like that, you know what I mean? But it's more than one way to get things done, right? Difficulty setting boundaries, having a hard time of saying no. Some of us have that. Where we have a hard time of saying no. That goes back to our childhood as well. Because when you're having a hard time of saying no, that's because you have went through something where you didn't wanna hear the word no. So you don't say no, okay? The fear of anger or having anger. Yes, that's abuse, right? Being angry. That someone has abused you and you haven't truly gotten through that, right? That's that anger, right? The difficulty expressing your emotions. We went through that one a little bit. And phobias, right? Phobias, um, you know, being, being scared or having su- superstitions and things like that. That brings on you getting triggered and being defensive about things, right? Also people pleaser syndromes, anxiety, overly competitive, fear of making mistakes and feeling guilty if you don't con- conform to your parents' ideas. You need to have things your way or else you will quit. Also, lack of healthy discipline. You can't move forward, family, in life without discipline. We talk about this all the time, but your inner child brings that into place where procrastination, inability to focus, finish, finishing tasks. Some of you have these things that reflect inner childhood wounds, okay? And so I'm gonna put in the Patreon, when I get off of here, a picture, well, not a picture, but it shows, uh, the inner child wounds and the different ones that you can tap into, the guilt, the abandonment, the trust, the neglect, right? And all of us have experienced one of those, okay? And so I'm not gonna go into that one because we kind of talked about that. But I do want you guys to know, without tapping into this inner child, it will be a projection of you putting it towards someone else. It could also lead to you being disassociated where you don't wanna relieve or show your emotions and you may be difficult to work with. You see what I'm saying? Cause you haven't worked with yourself. You haven't healed that inner child. So you still holding on to anger from when you were seven, you see? Harmful behaviors to others and yourselves. Yes, inner child can bring that. And then you can actually go through pain and suffering, right? Sorrow and regrets. We see it all over the ladder. If you in the lessons, you see it. But that's also a piece of that inner child that you haven't tamed or looked back at or reassessed. It could bring narcissic, narcissics, narcissist tendencies. You know what narcissist is, right? When you feel rejected and do not have unconditional love, you can go through the narcissist or maybe you had narcissist parents, okay? That's basically low self-esteem and you wanna overcompensate with something, seeking external validation, self-worth through achievement and success, right? That's a narcissist. It can turn you into a narcissist. These are things that you could turn into, family, with this. Not tapping into your in, inner child is what I'm running through. Codependency, okay? Where you have to constantly depend on someone else. When you came in this world and you gonna leave this world by yourself, okay? Trust issues, fear of intimacy, all right? Loss of self. You may feel like you've lost yourself, okay? And fear of abandonment. I always tell you guys that, but the way and some solutions. Like I was gonna tell you guys, I did some inner child work with getting a picture of myself. And my mom gave me a sma- a picture of myself when I was a baby and I forgot to bring it down here because I was gonna show you guys the picture that I worked with when I was doing some of my, um, inner child. And I brought it back out because I said, you know what? I need to do a little bit more, right? Cause there's some things that triggered me and when you get triggered, that's why I say shadow work is continuous, family. It doesn't end. I don't care what they tell you, okay? Um, but that's why I had this picture and I took the picture and really look at myself and say, you know, you take the photo, you put the photo up or put it on your desk, put it in your wallet, however you wanna do and meditate with that picture. And really see and tap into how you truly feel with that picture being there, you know? Really see how you feel. See how that, that child comes back to you. How does that child make you feel, right? You can also write a letter to your inner child. Love and acknowledge that part of yourself, okay? Yeah, try that. I'll show you guys the picture before I get off of here, but I do want you guys to try that because it was a very, very, um, emotional sense, okay? Of using a picture of yourself because it takes you back, family. It takes you back, okay? And writing that letter to your inner child, okay? Express the intentions to do your best to heal your inner child, that person. Allow yourself to breathe, feel anger or any other emotions that may arise because you're reconnecting to that painful childhood, okay? And sometimes, you know, children are ashamed and crying, things like that and let that out, the sadness, the anger, whatever it is. They have a, um, this, this, they put a, a letter up and I'm gonna post this so you guys can use this as your, you know, uh, something that can help you, but it starts out, "Dear little one." I love that. "You took on so much that was not yours to carry. We can set it down now, whenever you are ready. Love, me." That was just one example and I love that because it's telling your inner child, you can sit it down now. I'm here. I'mma help you, you know? So get your wounded child, inner child, um, you know, needs met, right? Yes, I'm so happy you got your coloring books. Yes, sis, that was amazing. I love that. Yes. Get your coloring books, get your markers, get, do what it is that you feel. Yes, do those things. Yes. Try it, sis. Get you a picture of yourself. By the way, I got my color. I'm so happy you got your coloring books. Now you color, little girl. You color, right? Have you a good old time. And that's, that's the next thing I was gonna talk about. Your inner journey work is you doing these type of things. If you felt neglected as a child, do those things. Get you whatever. Go skating. If you felt like, oh, my mama would never let me go skating and I hated her for that. Take yourself skating, okay? If you felt like, oh, my mama would never let me go skating and I hated her for that, take yourself skating, okay? Now put you some, if you at my age, you gonna have to put some, some, some pads and knee pads and stuff on. Because you, you fall out there, you break something, it's gonna be something serious at this age, right? But these are just examples to show you, do what you felt that you needed during that time, you see? To heal that part of you, you know, yeah, wrap up. Right, sis, wrap up, exactly, yeah. But become attuned with your emotions, family, and learn how to release them, accept them, acknowledge them. But re- release that, that anger and that, that part of you that needs to be um, reassessed. And you know, also try to integrate these solutions and tools into your life, okay? Inside of the Shadowwork Deck, I didn't get to it tonight, right? But inside of the Shadowwork Deck, we do have a card in here that talks about your child, your inner child, right? You can some, you know, if that comes out for you, you know what you got to do to tap in, right? Um, and I'm gonna pull us one, matter of fact, I'll pull us one to get out of here. Before we get out of here, rather, okay? I love, I just absolutely love this deck, for those that have ordered it, they're on the way, okay, they're on the way, okay? All right, mm, see? Inner child, look what came out, this one, it says, what has hurt me? So for your inner child, you should be there Saturday, wonderful. So for your inner child, family, the ancestors want us to look at what really and truly hurt you. Think about that, okay, think about that, write that down, what has hurt me? What has hurt you from your childhood all the way up? And think about that, now we have a full moon that's coming. You see, you can take that same thing that you put on there, on that piece of paper about what hurt you. And you can, you can get real creative with it and release that into the ethers, put it in your cow drone or whatever you burn it in. Write it down, write that person's name down, whatever that trauma was, whatever it was, family, and release it, right? Do what's best for you, family, but you gotta try it, you gotta start somewhere. Some of you guys are gonna see this after we get off of the live and I want you to do the same things too. And some of you guys need to be in that shadow work class, these are the main videos and classes you guys don't tap into. Should be the first ones you should, you see? So I'm gonna leave it there, family. I love you guys through the darkness to the light, right? And this was Shadowwork Sessions, Miss T, we got some work to do, okay? Um, let me see how I'm gonna do this. Because I wanna kinda end the stream with the Shadowwork Sessions, but I need for you to still be here. I'm wanting to be a mess if those classes, after those classes, right? Yeah, but it'll be a good mess, right? It'll be you being able to tap in, you welcome, hon, it'll be you being able to tap in and get some things started. Get some things done, learn a little bit about yourself. Because I'm gonna tap into multiple different ways for us to look at our shadow. And it's based off of our fingerprint, our blueprint here on this earth, which is what, our date of birth, right? And not only for us, we, you know, we, we got the ladder for some of us in the lesson, so that is showing your shadow. But we're gonna just build off of that, right? And so that's what we have to look forward to, right? And life path numbers, right? Hopefully you guys know your life path number and I did some life path readings already on my channel. Um, so you can go out there and you can check out your life path readings, right? I'm gonna go back and, and tap into that energy again for you guys and gonna do some more life path reading, okay? Um, so yes, family, that's what we're gonna do, all right? So I'm going to try to see if I can get out of this stream and open another stream for us to work into. And see if I can help you with what you need to do, Miss T, if she's still here, but if not. Um, I'll get back with her later in reference of what I wanna help her with. And family, you guys, do your shadow work, okay, tap in with yourself, what hurt me? That was your prompt for tonight from the Shadowwork Deck, all right? Like I said, I love you guys, through the darkness to the light, till the next time.